All right, we about ready to go?
Whenever you're ready.
All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the February 2025 regular Board meeting for the Kitsap Regional Library Board of Trustees. I am President Eric Fong. With me are Marwan Cameron, Eric Sisney, and our newest board member, Monica Blackwood. Gina Steiner is out on an excused absence. We'll give Monica a chance to introduce herself during the welcome and introductions, but let's go to Agenda Item 2. Eric, with the mission statement, please. I get you. I think your mic was on. We'll go to Jason for welcome and introductions.
I'm going to speak loudly. So, welcome in, everyone, to the February Kitsap Regional Library Board of Trustees meeting. We have the full house tonight. Executive Assistant Tammy Jeffrey, Chief Financial Operating Officer Deputy Director Dan Mayer, Deputy Director Public Services Shannon Peterson. We also have the Director of Transit and Communications Jeanie Allen. We have the Director of Kitsap Regional Library Foundation Wendy Kyle, and we have the Director of Women Resources and D E I, Teresa Robertson. And welcome in our newest trustee, Chris Martin Blackwood, for today's panel. Last, not the management controls, trying to get it fixed, is our Director of I T and Facilities Management Mike Rowe.
Thank you, Jason. I want to bounce it over to Monica to give her a chance to introduce herself.
I can now find a good voice. Hello, everyone. I'm Monica Blackwood, the West Town Boardwoman. And I'm very excited to be here. I'm the new board trustee member, lifelong resident of Kitsap County. And I know that the library system has been an integral part of our community from border to border for many, many years, 80 years, to be exact. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Monica. No additions or changes to the agenda. And we'll go to public comment. Per the public engagement in board engagement board policy, this time is designated for all residents of Kitsap County to present public comments. The public comment time is set aside for listening to feedback from community without discussion or debate with the speakers. Speakers are asked to follow the public comment board guidelines, which provides instructions and limitations to public comment that includes anonymous comments, forwarded emails of others' remarks, comments pertaining to personnel issues, and those that don't align with the library standards for patron conduct, library policy. If you wish to speak in person, please sign in with your name, organization, affiliation, if speaking as a representative of a group, and topic of interest. If you wish to share your public comment virtually, please submit a registration form. Please note that up to three minutes is allotted per person. And we have one person who would like to speak, and that is Roy Runyon. Roy, if you could please speak. You have three minutes when the timer begins.
Well, thank you, Board. First meeting I've been in the K R L. I'm a longtime taxpayer, helping support the organization, and a patron of the library. I want to read the First Amendment to the United States Constitution. We can all use a refresher once in a while, including myself. "Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof, or abridging the freedom of speech or of the press, or the right of the people, peaceably to assemble and to petition the government for a redress of grievance or grievances." So, on January 20th this year, three of us, three citizens, three taxpayers, assembled on Fourth Street. The occasion was the groundbreaking of the Quincy Square Project here in Bremerton. Our purpose was to protest, protest the continued service, I guess I'll use, of Judge Tracy Flood, who has been disgraced, who was suspended and censured by the Commission on Judicial Conduct. The purpose of our demonstration was to ask for a redress of grievances, specifically to ask Judge Flood to resign from her position. And so, I verbally expressed my grievance and also held signs. I had two other members of the public who were there. One was taking video. The other one was holding a sign. And we were confronted by an individual who I know, I realized who it was afterward, who is an ex felon, and threatened with violence. I was not assaulted by him. And then several other individuals showed up.
Sir, I'm sorry. Does this pertain to the library?
Actually, it does. Yeah. And the library is a paragon of the First Amendment, or at least I thought it was. So, one of the individuals who showed up was Jason Driver, who interjected himself, and I felt tried to interfere with my exercise of my First Amendment right. I hope you now remember me, Mr. Driver. And, you know, he was trying to reason with me and tried to ask me not to interfere with, it was Quincy Jones Day. But we are in a public space, on a public street. We had elected officials. We're citizens of the country. We have a First Amendment to our U.S. Constitution. It was inappropriate for Mr. Driver or anyone to try to interfere with our First Amendment right to express ourselves. And so, I didn't realize who he was, you know, and he did not assault me or threaten assault. Don't get me wrong. So, I think he was trying to defuse the situation, especially with the individual, the ex felon, who I'm sure he knows. But I just find it interesting. I don't know if Mr. Driver was there representing the library, K R L. I hope not. He didn't have a badge on or anything, so maybe he did. I'm not sure. But so, I just see a disconnect. So, we have someone who is a responsible member of our community.
Thank you for your feedback. So, your three minutes is, your three minutes is up. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay. With that, we will go to Agenda Item 6, the Consent Agenda. All matters listed within the Consent Agenda are considered to be routine. It will be enacted by one motion of the Board of Trustees with no separate discussion. If separate discussion is desired, items may be removed from the Consent Agenda and placed on the regular Agenda by request. We have 6.01, minutes of the January 23rd, 2025 regular board meeting. 6.02, minutes of the February 16th Board Retreat Meeting. Am I looking at the wrong? February 20th. I'm looking, holy cow, I'm looking at the wrong agenda here. I'm on another planet. I'm sorry. Minutes of the January 28th, 2025 regular board meeting, payment of the January 2025 bills, and the surplus library materials withdrawn from the collection for January 2025. Do I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda? Second?
I second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Abstain? Abstain. Motion passes. Thank you very much. And we will go to Agenda Item 7.01, Mission Moments, 80th Anniversary Celebration. Jeanie, welcome.
And I want to check that this is working. Okay. All right. Good afternoon. So, I want to take everybody back to 1944. Back then, library lovers and community supporters across Kitsap County had a big idea. They wanted to create a library district. Up until then, libraries here existed in our small communities, born of the passion of individuals who made them happen. When the idea went to voters, it passed overwhelmingly, and in 1945, the Kitsap Rural Library District was born, unifying our existing libraries to share and magnify resources, opening new libraries, and even launching a mobile services. So, here we are, 80 years later. A lot has changed, but what hasn't is our deep commitment to this community and the role that the library plays in supporting and shaping our communities throughout the years. So, we think that's worth celebrating. So, on February 14th, to celebrate our love for libraries, we launched our Passport to Explore, which encourages folks to get out and visit our library branches. So, this little book that everybody should have is jam-packed full of fun facts about our library and our history. Alongside the passport, we've launched limited edition library cards, which I have here, and I'll pass around so you can see them. And they have art that taps into the unique and special, what's unique and special about each of our communities. So, as a bonus, if you finish your passport, you receive a package of note cards that represents the art from all nine branches or a choice of a few other prizes. So, throughout the year, patrons can also expect to see our staff wearing their limited edition 80-year t-shirts. And if they really like them, they can go onto our store and buy them, or a sweatshirt, or a tote, anything they choose. Which brings me around to one more point. Most of our 80-year celebration is supported by our Kitsap Regional Library Foundation and would not be possible without their help. So, all of the proceeds from the sales that we make on the store are collected by the foundation and in turn support our libraries. So, we've already heard a lot of love for our artwork. So, one more way that we have to share that is in April. Aligned with spring break schedules and our local school districts, we're launching our first ever mug hunt. So, what that means is that we've taken the beautiful artwork from our cards and created nine library mug designs. And we'll be hiding these around our branches at different times and different days throughout spring break. If you find one, you get to keep it. It's a great reason to visit your favorite library or discover a new one. And just when you think the fun is winding down, in May, we turn things up again. Mark your calendars for May 9th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at our Silverdale Branch, where we're throwing a big anniversary party. It's going to be a community celebration that everyone's invited to, and we think it's going to be a pretty special evening. So, as you can see, the excitement's already building. I've already heard from a lot of our community partners, a whole bunch of buzz. Everybody wants to be involved. They want to see it in their locations. They want to feature it in their news posts. And our patrons are really loving the chance to explore more through Kitsap. I even heard of one couple who made it their Valentine's Day goal to visit as many branches as they could in one day. So, none of this would have come together or be nearly as fun without our amazing communications team. They've been working hard behind the scenes for a year and a half designing this program, fact-checking, writing, designing, and sourcing everything that we needed to bring it to life. And they continue to imagine how we're going to make it come to life for the rest of the year. So, a huge thank you to Victoria Gingry, Ayanna Jones, Caitlin Nicholas, and Terri Tapia. And if you're asking yourself if that's it, it's not. As we move beyond May and into summer, our 80-year festival will take a step back for our always popular summer learning program. But then, we're planning a strong finish for the year. You can look forward to more fascinating facts, interactive timelines, and some surprises along the way. We're excited to collaborate at the end of the year with the Kitsap History Museum for what should be a really great installation there as well. We can't wait to celebrate all year long and look forward to 80 more years of curiosity, connection, and community. Any questions?
If I can't find a mug, can I purchase a mug? I'm definitely a collector.
You cannot.
Now, this is wonderful. I appreciate you sharing. Can you share a little bit? I know that you've been working on this for a while. Can you share a little bit about kind of the process of when you started, when you and your team started, and the process? Would love to hear more about it.
Yeah. The 80-year celebration, we kind of came to the realization that it was coming around last year. And actually, there was a lot of work to even validate that it was, in fact, 80 years, because there was a discrepancy between a couple of different ballot measures that went out in '45 and '55, and which one was actually the beginning of Kitsap Regional Library. So, we had to resolve that. The idea for the passport is actually something that a couple of different staff over the years have brought forward. Obviously, you've seen other community organizations do it. Other libraries have done it. We've done it more than 15 years ago. And so, we wanted to do it because people are passionate about it. They're excited about it. It's something that they wanted to do, and it seemed like a good marriage to bring that together with the 80-year celebration and also find a way to make it fun and fresh. So, if you look through your passport booklet, there's little fun facts, kind of weird and interesting in some areas, and timelines for the library. And then, we're really looking forward to expand that into our website and continue to add things. It's been a journey going through some of the boxes of pictures and papers and little brochures, and also just really special to find all of those little nuggets. So, we'll be able to kind of pull some of those things forward and share them throughout the year. And we also know that, like, community organizations like the Kitsap History Museum have their own archives of our history that we don't have access to, that we're going to get to dig into, and the State Archive as well. So... And I think we even had, like, a patron come in recently with a booklet of her own history of the Kitsap Regional Library. So, you know, it bubbles up through the community. Our friends keep their own timelines. And so, we're by no means going to have an exhaustive timeline, but it's been pretty neat to dig into everything. And we just want to keep it going all year long. So, we're looking for different ways for Kitsap to just kind of pop up in the community.
Very cool. I always appreciate the thoughtfulness and the level of detail you put into you put into the design and love that you get to showcase all the different personalities across each of the libraries and really showcasing the staff and the different communities and so forth. So, really nice, really excited to put on the miles and hit all the locations in the passport. So, thank you.
Anyone else? All right. I will pass around the library cards and the note cards so you can take a peek at them, but you cannot have them. You have to earn them. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Jeanie. All right. And we'll go to Board Member Updates, Agenda Item 7.02. I don't have any updates. I've actually been traveling quite a bit, so I've not been home all that much the last couple of months. So, I'll open it up to the other board members to share any library updates.
One thing I just wanted to bring to light was the severe weather shelters were open for 29 straight days. And the library plays an integral part in ensuring that those that are unhoused and have a place to go. And so, that's a lot. And so, I always want to acknowledge that. And then, also, I will be in Bainbridge on Friday. So, are the mugs going to be there Friday? No? So, on Friday, there is a Black History Panel. It is the Pretty Little Black Dolls, and that is going to be an excellent event that I'm looking forward to attending. That is February 28th at 5:30. I look forward to spending time at the Bainbridge Library.
I guess my quick update, being brand new, is that on Monday, I will be at the Paul's Bow Library from 4:30 to 6:30. The first hour, 4:30 to 5:30, I'm doing a how-to-set-up-your LinkedIn profile. Second half of it is, like, how to boost your profile. For those who are in the job-seeking roles or portions of their life, this is a way to help them continue to network. And I've been working with Karina, the library there, on this for a number of months before talking about being on the board even. So, there we go. And later in the month, March 24th, they have a photographer coming to do professional headshots for free for people as well to be able to use on their LinkedIn profile or whatever else. So, thanks.
That's great. Thank you, everybody, for sharing. We will go to 7.03, Long Range Strategic Planning Committee Report. Marwan or Monica, do you have an update?
Couple of things to share. Our primary goals continue to be, for this year, working on the levy, and of course, the 80th birthday, and then, of course, continuing to prioritize our supporting staff. Also, looking at replacing Sylvan Way continues to be a big topic of conversation, looking at how to expand and bring in new partners. Looking at crisis plan, just looking at long-term planning at this point. One big one is library IQ, which I think we'll hear a little bit more about later. But training is going on right now, and the board should see some initial reports in about four to six months. And that is my report.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate the update. We'll go to 7.04, Financial Report. Dan?
Good evening, Board. January's a pretty light month, so I don't really have a lot to add to that. But I'll be glad to take questions if anybody has any questions.
Any questions for Dan? Okay. Thank you. We'll go to 7.05, Library Director's Report. Jason?
Oh, it's working. Sorry. All right. So, January was busy, as they all are. As leadership always has to remind me when it's going to be a busy, they always chime in, "It's always busy." So, in January, obviously, we kicked off the 80th year anniversary, as Jeanie talked about. So, the celebration is really a celebration of not only our past, but, you know, it's an opportunity to reinforce our commitment to access, to innovation, and to our community. So, I'm really looking forward to engaging in the passport program myself, with my family, and visiting all nine locations and interacting with staff. And so, I'm hopeful that this will be a program that really, community members will embrace and have fun along the way. So, I'm looking forward to participating, looking forward to the board participating. And most importantly, looking forward to celebrating with the community in May at Silverdale. So, look forward to seeing you all there. And I'm really looking forward to the community just discovering something new about our libraries, because I think one of the things that communications, along with public services and all the other partners internally that have been a part of this is, you know, they've poured a lot of energy into wanting to, you know, really imbue our mission in this, you know. Like, how can we keep people curious, and how can we keep them engaged? And so, I think the materials bear that out, and so, looking forward to seeing you along the 80th year anniversary road. In other news, in terms of community engagement, January was really filled. I would say the theme of January was really about partnership development, lots of strategic meetings, and then, national representation at the American Library Association's Midwinter Conference, which is called LibLearnX. So, several key meetings really focus on collaboration and advocacy. Shannon and myself met with Julius Blackwell, better known as Doc Love the Kids, to really continually talk about initiatives to support youth in this county. Obviously, the library does that through several vehicles, including Storytime, Summer Learning. But, you know, wanting to partner with organizations as well, who both support youth and are about advocating for youth are important. So, really excited about continuing to develop opportunities for the library to engage with community along those lines. Engage our local leaders, including new Kitsap County Commissioner Orrin Root from District 2, and Christine Rolfes, who is Commissioner 1. Go every year is to connect with the commissioners to get a sense of what the priorities are and to give updates on what the library is doing. So, those meetings happened in January. Also, participated in a survey through an organization working on behalf of the Bremerton Housing Authority to, and this agency is contracted by the U.S. Department of Housing to really discuss where the community housing needs in Bremerton, and how we can be a part of really shining a light on what are some of the areas that, you know, unhoused individuals, how that's affected the library, and sort of what our view of that is. And so, it was really enlightening, both for me as a leader, to participate in that, to gain a greater understanding of what the needs are in this county and how the library can align to making sure we can ameliorate some of the deficits in terms of housing and other disparities in the county. So, just happy and honored. Lots of us got asked to do that, not just myself. And so, in fact, I participated with one of our leaders from MLK. And so, that was a great opportunity to really get involved in some good work. Also, we, you know, in terms of safety, we're always talking about safety in the library, and so, really proud of our internal safety teams. And then, those meetings happen regularly. I met with a group of community leaders also in terms of, in terms of advancing library strategy. We're starting to get out, myself and Wendy Kyle, Executive Director of the Kitsap Regional Library Foundation, to build some synergy with our friends in order to gain their support, to eventually be able to get out and pass a levy. And so, that work, as the board knows, will be forthcoming, once we're able to pass a resolution. And so, really trying to get ahead of that and get support from our friends' organizations, which support, you know, I think seven of our nine libraries, if I'm correct. So, those meetings are happening. I think we have three more of them to go. So, that work started in earnest in January. So, really proud of, you know, my partner in that endeavor, which is really the entire leadership team, but specifically Wendy Kyle, who is, whose role on behalf of the foundation is to support the library. In other news, strategic discussions around, you know, utilizing library HQ, that continues with ALA speaking. Other meetings that happened, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention a continual process of trying to uncover what it would take to replace Sylvan Way, which is an aging facility. Sylvan Way, as you know, is, serves as not only one of our two Bremerton libraries, but also serves as our central library, de facto central library for the county, and that, our admin and all of our sort of core operations emanate from there. And so, really wanting to get ahead of the catastrophe of if that building, you know, something happens to it, how can we, you know, best be served by a new facility? And more importantly, who can we partner with so that, you know, the lift isn't heavy for our taxpayers, one? And how can we align with other partners? Because that seems to be the mode of how we, you know, accomplished the last two to three library projects, two specifically Kingston and Silverdale. So, how can we continue in that sort of engagement, but do it in a way that it brings in more community partners? Especially with demanding some resources and the ability to collaborate, it's going to be important that we all keep our eyes on the prize, and how can we not only build a library, but how can we, you know, connect with other partners to be able to meet other needs? So, you talked about it a little bit, Marwan, starting to build synergy and grab partners around how we can make this happen, how we can create a clear vision, how we can create a groundswell movement to be able to create really what we're calling a community campus that encompassed resources for families, and really everyone. It's not just geared for families and geared for the entire county, but since we're talking about Bremerton specific, and that's where the facility will be. about Birmerton specific, and that's where the facility will be, really starting to entertain ideas about who needs a facility, who wants to partner, and what would be the itinerary benefits of doing a campus like this? So obviously, we're a long way to go. Meetings are happening at the clip of about once a month. And so along with that, when I was at ALA, Shannon recommended that I visit a library in Scottsdale called the Arabian Library, and I visited the Phoenix Public Library's main library, just to really sort of get some envisioning around how we can create something that best resembles the community campus we want. And the Arabian Library is something that is kind of like that. So appreciate the leaders for giving me advice on where to go and what to do and how to do it, because that sort of informs of my work. And so I'll be, you know, doing other tours. As the board knows, that's a big part of what I do is getting out into community and checking out places like that of tour libraries in Washington. Really trying to keep it local right now and not wanting to, you know, spend the library's resources to send us to different places when we have examples of that right in our backyard. And so we've often talked as a leadership team, should we get groups of people and fly to different places? And that's just not, you know, we've thought about that more, and I guess I've thought about it more, and it's just not a good use of resources when we have examples. And certainly, we have opportunities to see things without actually traveling there. And sometimes you actually do need to be physically in a place to be able to see it. So, but I think we have enough data that that work will continue. In other news, our 2025 organizational goals, you have them in your pack, and I won't read through them exhaustively. What I would say about the goals are of importance to us always is to support our people. Our people are our number one asset. And so our work through the Kitsap Regional Library Foundation is the core way in which you do that. But obviously, as leaders, it's always about listening, it's always about engaging with our teams and about making sure that we can support them through the vehicle of not only being partners with them day to day and week to week, but also celebrating them. Two staff days, which are learning days, but they're also days to celebrate our staff, celebrate our cause and our commitment. So our next staff day will be March 13th? And board is always invited at staff day. We will be at Clearwater Resort, and I'm looking forward to a dynamic keynote speaker, and we'll talk about how the library continues to engage in the community. And so looking forward to that. In terms of January statistics, circulation growth, it's about a 7% increase. You know, these numbers always slide depending on what's happening. You know, I wouldn't say that this number tells a story of this is a trend that will continue. What I will say is the library is always well used, so I just want to always give that disclaimer about stats in terms of like how it informs what we do. It's really a snapshot of how people are using our libraries, and it really informs how we can take our services and make them more available to folks, whether in-house or out-house. So I always like to look at what's happening month to month, and each month tells a different story. So I always want to preface that because we're going to start from month to month highlighting different statistics. I kind of put out an exhaustive list now and just wanting to show you what the trends are from January, from December 2024 to January 2025. And obviously, lots of things play into that. Library closures because of weather, closures because of holidays, Christmas happens, there's always that, as I call it, the two to three to four week hiatus where December hits and everybody's on hiatus. And so statistics revolve and they change, and then as we run initiatives, you'll see the statistics likely balloon in the summer when the weather is more tolerable for people to go out. We've got the 80 year anniversary. The goal is always to get as many people, you know, in our libraries and using our library website to be able to engage in the content and engage with us as possible. And so that's the disclaimer I will throw out. But there are some stats I'm proud of, you know, we always want to focus on, and you know, that's part of giving you a sneak peek on the things that we think are important that has benefits for our community. You know, digital resources, more and more people are reading digital books. Hand raised, who's a digital book reader in this room? Yeah. Good percentage, probably two thirds of the room, if not more. And so what that looks like for us is how can we continually add resources? How can we figure out more resources available to do things like that? Is, as the board knows and the community, you know, roughly 80, 85% of our budget is allocated towards staff. So how do we have enough to be able to support capital needs? We don't have that. How do we have enough to be able to support the continual process of supporting not only the library people, our biggest asset, but also our physical assets and the buildings and all the resources, the things that, you know, depreciate over time? The facility and vehicles and all that stuff depreciate. So how are we able to do that? So I'm really proud of our ability to be able to think and be forward thinkers and how we can set the library up for the next seven to 10 years to be able to provide the resources for folks and how folks are using the library today and in the future. And so looking at this stat in terms of digital resource utilization, database sessions decreased by 55%. And again, there's a lot behind that number, and, but we do know anecdotal data from getting comment cards and from talking to patrons that people want more digital resources. And so continuing to take a look at our collections and figuring out how we can grow them and make them more available and diverse is going to be important. Public computer sessions, people are still using public computers as a big part of what happens in the library. And so public computer sessions rose by 8%, 8% with computer hours increasing 21% and printing services surged 35%. You know, and I think, you know, there's a reliance on in branch resources. We have lots of regular patrons who come into the library who depend on us for printing needs and how are they using them? You know, some of them are for business resources, some of them are for people who are, you know, doing research on various things, students, you name it. And so looking ahead for us, and door counts, don't want to go past that. In-person visits grew by 3%. And, you know, I think door counts are, it's always sliding. Again, like I said, people are in or out depending on what's happening. And as we know, and as I'm finding out, you know, when the dark hits and the rain is there, we'll likely get reduced numbers and that will increase. But, you know, anecdotally, of course, admin is in a library. And so oftentimes, we're, you know, leaving out of our offices, taking walks and just, you know, coming out today into Sylvan Way and seeing the robust activity of patrons doing a little bit of everything. Passports, getting prints, getting holds, people coming in with their kids for programs, you know? There's a, you know, veritable melting pot of activity happening in libraries all in the span of, you know, our operating hours from, you know, 10 to 7. Could have various things happening. And so anecdotally, people are using the library as strong as they ever have been. It just looks a lot different today because it's spread across, you know, a million of resources. Genealogy Center, it could be a little, you know, coming to pick up holds. There's a lot of different activities and a lot of different ways that people can engage in the library. So I'm really proud of how we've been able to adapt and how we've been able to really game plan for an uncertain future. And so I'm hopeful that once we talk about with this board and the community about what our levy ask will be, that the community understands that, you know, strong libraries make for strong communities, and we've got a strong team, we've got a strong staff, and so we'll really be looking, we've got a strong board. And so really proud of that. Finally, you know, as we continue, I'm really hopeful about the library's future. This 80th year anniversary, I'm really excited about, again, just to finish where we started. There's going to be a lot of vibrancy that goes into the celebration, and it really is a culmination of not only a celebration of our shared history over 80 years, but it's a celebration of our community, because without the community, we wouldn't have a library, we all wouldn't have jobs, and we certainly, you know, I don't know what I'd be doing. I've had a lot of jobs in my life, UPS to, you know, social services, and they were all great jobs, but none has been greater than this role in not just the executive director role, but working for a library. It's a labor of love for this entire team. So I appreciate the board's support of the library overall, and I appreciate our newest board member for joining the team. Number appreciative to this group lastly, because this team, when all else fails, has all the answers for how we're going to move about and serve the community, even when it looks uncertain. So January got off, I think, to a really good start for this team. A lot happened during the month, and I'm looking forward to the rest of the year. And that's all I have. I'll open for questions if anyone has them.
So, you know, I love the numbers. With some of these statistics that are generated, is this generated from the library IQ?
Not yet. Okay. Not yet. They will be. And library IQ can pull these same statistics. One of the things we're doing in our process now, still doing the way we've done before, and there are lots of different inputs for statistics, but we're still interpreting the statistics the way we've gotten them. I don't know how long we've been doing them this way, but that's just where they're from, our normal mode of gathering the data.
Thank you, Jason, for your report. It's always, it's always good to remember not only how much you do on the ground here, but also how much you travel to understand, you know, how other systems work and bringing in the best of, the best of everything around. So appreciate the, appreciate the update also, appreciate the metrics. It's always, always good to see and understand and get a baseline. So we have a real understanding of just like the raw amount of work that the staff does and the number of people that are served. So that's always good. Anybody have any other questions for Jason? No? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll go to Agenda Item 10, Housekeeping, which is the reference to the next board meeting, which is on Tuesday, March 25th, 2025. And with that, we will adjourn. Thank you, everybody. Have a good evening.